Another gavel.
Yeah.
We're going to come into work session. Good evening, everybody. This work. Good evening, everybody. This work session, Public Meeting of the Board of Education for January 10th, 2023, is called the Word. Tonight, we will begin our session with a vote on a consent agenda. Consent agenda is posted on the PPS website, under the Board of Meetings tab. This meeting is being streamed live on the PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and it will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Check the history website for replay times. Good evening, thanks everyone for being here tonight. In addition to a discussion of the proposed 2023-24 school year calendar, we are also going to be receiving an update on the most recent discipline data and voting on a consent agenda. We are going to start with the consent agenda first, get that out of the way, and then move on to the rest of the work session. So with that, the board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, any items you would like to pull for discussion? Set those aside for discussion. Yes, we'll put it on the table, and you can ask your question. Ms. Bratch, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
There was a change that was posted earlier this afternoon, Resolution 6630. There was a contract withdrawn.
There was a?
A contract withdrawn.
Okay. And that was 66?
30.
6630.
And it was posted, I just wanted to make sure we read that.
Yeah, great. Okay, do I have a motion in second to adopt the consent agenda? Motion?
Second.
Director Konstant moves and passes second. And with that, any more discussion of the consent agenda?
Yeah, just a quick question. This is for the board access to you. Thanks for the very detailed memo on the Harrison Park contracting. Just to clarify, so this is just to allow a different contracting method, and ultimately, the contract will come back to us again.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Great, any other discussion or questions? The board will now vote on Resolutions 6629 through 6632, with the exception of 6630.
It's been amended, it's still there, but it's 660.
Great, thank you. So we'll vote on the Resolutions 6629 through 6632 as amended. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Any intentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Student Representative McMahon voting yes.
Oh, and six to zero?
Did we hear Gary?
Oh.
Yes.
Great. So seven to zero, Student Representative McMahon voting. Thanks, everybody. Next up for tonight's work session is a discussion of the 2023-24 school calendar, and we're going to preview a draft proposal of that calendar. Superintendent Guerrero?
Yes, thank you Chair, and just as a point of privilege, just happy school board members' month, the month of January. We'll find, I'm sure, many opportunities. Thank you for your volunteer service and commitment here at PPS. But one item that we were going to discuss next is one that draws a lot of attention from our families and students, and that's why we like to put out a draft soon after the winter break, so our Deputy Superintendent, Daniel Cogan, who takes the lead for us, you know, in vetting this out, are going to tell you a little bit about some of the features in this adjusted calendar.
Good evening, Board Chair and Board Directors. Really excited to bring forward the calendar in the month of January. This is an opportunity to really speak about how we are looking at calendaring for next school year, and also looking forward to a vote by the end of January, so that we can continue the process of notifying our families about our anticipated dates. So many of the features of the previous year's calendar are included in this proposed calendar. Like last year, there are three professional development days, which are non-school days. They've been added to the calendar to support professional learning. These three professional development days are on October 13th, January 29th, and April 8th. They are additional days added to the calendar and do not reduce the existing instructional days. Professional educators from schools identified for improvement, which are CSI or TSI schools, are required to attend. Professional educators from other schools may attend. Any teachers who attend will be paid for their participation, excuse me, at their hourly rate. Professional learning is critical to the success of implementation of our newly adopted curriculum and the instructional framework, and to ensure that we are providing opportunities to support our teachers in growing their practice. The start date of the proposed calendar is August 29th as the first day of school, and with June 11th being the last day of school. This before Labor Day beginning to the school year is consistent with the past several years. The following grades have a staggered start, all right? So the start date for 7th, 8th, 10th, and 11th graders is August 30th to provide a jump start for 6th, 9th, and 12th graders. The start date for kindergarten is September 5th to allow for a ramp up to welcome kindergarten students and families. And the district considered an after-Labor Day start, however, decided against it. Postponing the start of the school year by one week will likely not result in better health and safety outcomes. Starting in September after Labor Day means going later into June, which may create additional problems with heat and such. So we are really holding to starting the school year on August 29th, really maximizing on the opportunity to have instructional days added in the beginning, so that we could get our students off to a great start. So to avoid conflicts with major religious and cultural holidays, to the extent possible, the district and schools work to avoid scheduling conflicts, you know, during these holidays that are recognized by various religions and culturally specific groups. So the school-wide events, we're really going to try to work with our school communities to avoid conflicts with back-to-school nights, assemblies, and other special events. There is a list of major religious holidays that we've attached for you and cultural events identified and for, to avoid conflicts. And we will want students to ensure that they are scheduling accordingly. As a part of the 2023-24 school year preparations, we will inform, train, and create reminders to educators, school leaders, and central office staff about the importance of these in the development of major schools, classroom, or district-wide events. And finally, at the next board meeting, as I stated before, on January 24th, you will vote to adopt this calendar. It would be before you, for your consideration for the vote. And so with that, I'm done with sharing, and if there are any questions?
I have a quick question. Thank you for the, it looks like the really broad stakeholder engagement. Did you hear from anybody that they were, that they had issues with any of the calendar dates?
No.
Any, did you have anybody that didn't agree with these, these dates? I mean, the dates are on the calendar, but adopting them?
We've.
Was that a 100% buy-in, or were there some people that were like, well, wait a minute?
So, so we have engaged stakeholders in the process and have received feedback. And you have consensus of what was shared during those engagement activities. This is the calendar that we have presented here.
So is this the same number of professional development days that we have this year for both the majority of the schools and then the CSI and TSI schools?
Yes.
The group of students who came and presented last year at the meeting in which we adopted last year's calendar, were they part of the, were they consulted as part of the process of building this calendar?
Those students specifically? Yes.
No. No. I have some other questions.
Go ahead.
Yes, so, sorry, is there an increase of instructional time in this calendar, or is it the same as last year?
It represents the instructional time that would be parallel to this year.
Before we vote next week or accompany next week, can we just get that down, what, by the grade level?
Yeah, I believe it would have been prepared for you, but as far as the projected instructional hours that we're looking at for this calendar, kindergarten would have 914. First through fifth grades would have 929. Sixth through eighth grade would have 950. Ninth through 11th grades would have 1019 to 1022, depending on the adopted bell schedule of the individual schools. And 12th grade would have between 800, 981 to 984, depending on senior class day and the adopted bell. And I'm going to pause, and I'm going to reintroduce Daniel Cogan. Because as I am going through this, I'm leaning in a little closer to check out how I'm doing. Daniel, try to think of.
Yeah, I think, as Dr. Parker said, the calendar instructional hours are parallel to the current year. The numbers she wrote off was approximate across the grade bands of what we expect, based on how schools are scheduled. But they've yet to schedule, so those are not 100% at this moment.
Do instructional hours on this proposed calendar meet all instructional requirements, and in some cases, a little bit above? So there's a little bit of margin of room for unforeseen circumstances when classes may be canceled.
Is she? So for example, the 6 to 8, the 950, if the 7th and 8th graders were in that extra day, the 6th?
Right, it's about five and a half hours in middle schools that we would subtract for those grade levels.
And then we're cutting instructional hours, that's like classroom hours. We don't count professional development.
Correct, so middle school.
Same practices last year.
Correct.
Correct.
Nothing's changed over the last several years that I've been involved in this. So we say approximately 950 hours for middle school and the five and a half hours per day. Middle school students are bell-to-bell in school for six and a half hours, but we're only counting about five and a half hours of instructional time. We're not counting recess and lunch.
And actually, thank you for the, Director Hollins, and answer initial questions. So we'll come to you, and then we'll come to you, Director Lowry. Director Hollins?
Yes, hi. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone.
You too.
Yeah, I have one question, a couple of questions. When we talk about the CSI, PSI schools being mandatory to do PD days, I'm just curious, why is that not mandatory for all teachers to do PD days during those days as well? And then my second question is nationally, our instructional time, where do we rank in our instructional hours nationally?
Okay, so for your first question regarding CSI and TSI schools, there is a provision within the contract that allows for us to add professional development days for select schools. However, we're not able to make it mandatory for all. And the second part of your question, Director Hollins, I think I missed a part of it. Can you repeat it, please?
And in our instructional time, kind of nationally, where do we fall at in instructional hours? Are we like at the, towards the bottom of instructional hours? Or are we on the high in for instructional hours?
And you're asking, I thought I heard you say nationally? So I don't have that answer at this time, but I'd be happy to look into that and see if I could come up with a good response for you.
Close to face.
Correct. Right, and so I just, I wanted to throw this out there. I don't know if everybody can hear me, but in the elected officials meeting that we had at MESD, I believe it was Dimbrow, had mentioned that a lot of the state leaders, or state representatives and senators at the State House were looking or would be encouraged to look at year-round school if a district wanted to take that endeavor on. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, it's true that, you know, the standard in many states is a 180-day traditionally, sometimes 182, or even below that, you know? And we welcome any state leadership in wanting to resource or mandate a longer school year if there's resources for.
Because if we were to add days, we'd have to go through bargaining, correct?
Correct.
And then there, you know, budgetary resource implications that we would need to be funded fully for that.
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, yeah, and I mentioned that to him as well, as far as, you know, it's a great idea, but, you know, if we're not getting the funding that we're supposed to get now, how will we get the funding to do that as well? So I did mention that as well.
Thank you, Gary, yes.
Great question.
Yes, that was the point I was going to make, thank you. Great, and you'll try and see if we can find some national.
Yeah, I would be happy to. You know, I could easily say from the top of my head, coming into Portland, I did threaten this early on, that we are on the low end, with approximately 174 instructional days, where in other districts where I have worked, it's been 180. And that is, is what we know, right? But I would love to be able to look a little deeper, to give more, you know, more detailed response to that instructional question.
It's a good talking point also, as we, you know, talked to the legislature this session around, you know, what you're providing, even with some of the additional resources lately, still optimize what is less than a lot of districts in the country.
Jonathan, and our days are short.
Oh, it's like the data has been found?
Trump, oh, please, thank you to Jonathan Garcia. But yes, when we look across states, all states, the states I'm seeing mostly have 180 days, as we say across, across the 50 states. The state that is, that's looking at like the lowest right now is Colorado, with 160 school days, which is extremely low. I would not recommend that. I'm sorry, that was not my inside.
It's like we're going to get calls from.
Illinois is at 185. Kentucky, 170, Louisiana, 177. Minnesota, 165. There are some states with no minimum days required, like Missouri. Montana sets it by school district, by school district. And the ones, the states that I don't mention are all at 180. North Carolina is at 185.
So these are days, but that doesn't tell us instructional hours, because like Director Konstant said, our days are shorter than some places in the country. So not only do we have fewer days, sometimes have shorter days, so our students are also feeling that impact.
Yeah, well, thank you, and it'd be great, actually, a link for the board.
Yeah, we'll send that out.
Fantastic.
I think what's interesting is, I think also the state of Oregon, the rules are around hours versus in most states are days.
So interesting. Director Lowry?
So I was a little disappointed to see that September 25th and April 22nd were not days off school. When we heard from our students a year ago, when they came in, that was one of the things they were asking, is that, I believe it was Yom Kippur off, and then Eid off at Ramadan. And we had talked about some of the value is a community to have those days off as part of a way to sort of begin a conversation about valuing other traditions and cultures and lifting that up. So I understand, like, we're in negotiations, we're trying to figure out that, but I really, we really highlight for us, as we continue this process, to look at those two days especially. And again, I have to apologize, I think the students were asking for Yom Kippur, but it could have been Rosh Hashanah, but I think Yom Kippur is the day of atonement. Yeah, both are important.
Yeah.
But, so I just, I was hopeful that we would begin to move in that direction, and that may be where we're moving for 24, 25. But I'd like to highlight those two days especially as being of significant cultural relevance and days we should consider taking off.
And I do want to highlight that we provide a list of religious holidays for multiple cultures.
Not just cheat out on the list.
Yeah, so it's really interesting, and this is just commentary from me to say, it's really interesting to really identify one culture over another, to say that we're going to observe and recognize this religious holiday. And then you have other cultures that we're not recognizing the holiday as well. So, you know, but I definitely think it's something we will continue to surface and continue to look at to ensure that we provide flexibility for families and students, and also look at the possibility of offering those days off.
And I know it becomes really complicated as we look at, whose traditions are we honoring by a day off school, the ones that are not. But I think what we heard from the students that testified last year was that the nature of those celebrations, it would be helpful to not have schools on those days. And I really do appreciate this calendar. It's feasting on Eid, but yeah, so that it's, this calendar is really helpful, and I think I've heard, you know, how schools are trying to navigate it to not fiddle things on those days, and I think it's a great first step. I would encourage us to look at, can we add a couple days? Could we add two days? And I know then we're not celebrating Diwali or others, but to kind of move forward in how we look at that.
Yeah, and we'll definitely look at that and weigh, you know, also with our 174 school days.
Yeah, I wouldn't want us to lose any days, the whole, we had to look at the whole picture.
Yeah.
But I would really encourage them.
And bargain, you know, bargain for the other pieces as well.
I was just wondering, I see like the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just looking at like this moderate of stakeholders. I was wondering, did we get like a chance to talk with students directly? And if so, like, what was the response from them? Obviously, we do a great job, like, I think there's great core balancing here. And I was wondering if like there was any spaces where students had any direct commentary that you felt was notable, or that maybe you took into account in certain elements? I'm just, or just, I guess, understanding how that feedback played in.
Yeah, we did not get a chance this round to speak to students. I think our goal was to really get this calendar out as soon as possible. So we did, we did reach out to some stakeholder groups, but I think it's a suggestion for next year to make sure we're including stakeholders.
So I'm curious, because last year, my recollection, I just want to build on Ali's comments, is last, my recollection was last year as, because when the students came and presented, it wasn't the first time that we had that presented. I mean, it's been a perennial issue for 20 years, at least during my tenure on the board. And so I thought what we were going to do is last year. What's you? Overlay it so that last year, people could see them, and we could schedule around them, but that this year, we would have that conversation. So I, that's why I asked a question whether we'd had the conversation with the students who presented, because it seems like we're going to now take another year to talk about it. And we had a number of conversations in the committee about how we constitutionally recognize religious holidays. And I look at it from the standpoint of, if you're looking at the Christian holidays, they're, you know, captured and they're always, you always have them off because they're part of winter break, or on Easter on Sunday, the major ones. But the, so they're already kind of taken care of. And then when we looked at the other, from a constitutional standpoint, how do you constitutionally do it? And we looked at data on the major religions based on our student population, which is the.
Population, not on account.
Yeah, please, this is a non-legal summary. Is that we, looking at that, if we had a significant number or a number of students in that particular religion, we could consider it, which is how this originally had gotten built, I think, through the committee. So I guess I'm curious why we couldn't have those two days be days? Just I hate to have another year go by where we sort of give a nod to it and but don't actively recognize it.
I do think some of the process that was undertaken by the policy committee to identify, to use religiously neutral criteria to identify the list, we'd need a similar process for this.
Need to do what, sorry?
A similar process to identify additional dates that you're going to close for certain religious experiences. I think it's, you need a similar process to.
I thought that's what we were going to, I mean, I thought that's what we.
We're doing.
Students were going to do over the, over the, over this past year.
I didn't understand that there was a, there was action being taken coming out of the policy committee's discussion on this that was leading, definitively leading to school not being in session on certain religious holidays. And if that's a work stream, the board wants staff to undertake. We should get aligned on that, that was not my understanding.
No, I'm with Director Brimford, so my understanding was that last year, because of the timeline and the way the calendar had already created that we were going to send out the list this year, and that then for the 23-24 calendar, we were going to talk about what days we were going to have off.
That discussion in the policy committee?
I thought that, I thought staff was going to, based on what the policy committee had given about the days off and the criteria, I thought staff was then going to discuss that as part of calendar development. So that's where I think we had a.
I'm not sure staff understood the direction that explicitly. I think there were conversations about athletic calendars and some of the pieces, but that's an honest, I think, disconnect.
So I think we need to take that back to policy and have a conversation about what it is that we want to see happen with this.
Other questions?
Well, especially if we're going to move ahead without doing that. Like, a question I would have is, I'm looking at Attachment 1 and Attachment 2. Is this like all one, the paper is? One of the.
That's the backside calendar.
So I just want to go back again, like continuously getting, getting better. But last year, even though we had some of these dates, we still had things happening that even, and I know there's things that we can't control, but there were still, like district-wide things happening on some of these other major dates, because it wasn't on the calendar. And I know, I know we talked about this last year, like, there's too many icons, but I don't know any other way, this is like the butt.
That's what you put on your refrigerator.
Right, and so if you don't see it there, if you're the PTA president, you're wanting to schedule a meeting, or you're the PE teacher and scheduling field day, or a teacher scheduling a test, and you don't see, like, there's no, it's not overlaid on the calendar, I think it just, we're going to continue to have, we didn't mean to do it that way, but it just happened, and so.
As we discussed at a previous policy committee meeting, I think one of the things that we were going to look at as we come into this year is a three-tier communication approach, so, because what you're pointing out to is that there have been pockets, I think, you know, our OSP team has done a good job of informing and working with principals, so that school-wide events are very, are not impacted. But what we're noticing and what we realize is that that may not be the case in the classroom or in the central office, right? And so we might do a district-wide event, or we might do a classroom event. So one of the things that we're going to be moving forward is a tiered kind of communication. One of the things that we learned, Daniel, from last year was the idea of constant reminders to these stakeholders, right? Because even if we put it on this PDF, you know, this constant reminder of, hey, these events are, these holidays are coming forward, make sure that you're not scheduling. So will it be perfect? I doubt it, but, you know, we're working towards that scaffolding of communications.
Is there a reason why we can't put it on the, I mean?
No, that's good feedback. If putting a box around that date helps to signal and remind folks that that's probably a day when we want to avoid it, these are a couple of ways, it might even be an athletic event across districts, we have to negotiate that. But, you know, this is sort of the point of sharing a draft proposed calendar is to hear the feedback, you know, we're hearing, you know, let's also have opportunities for students to weigh in a little bit more explicitly. And is there some way to illustrate it in a way that signals that one page on the fridge a little more clearly?
So the other thing is, and I'm not sure. So, the other thing is, and I'm not sure, there is a policy coming, or it's gonna be adopted through policy or more practice through the policy committee, but for example, like Fairfax County, which is one of the policies that we looked at, they actually were pretty clear about who had the accountability to make sure, like, there was a designated person in the central office that was responsible for district-wide not having conflicts with holidays. And then also, there was a very explicit in the policy accountability for the principal to make sure that no school events were happening. And I'm not saying that people are intentionally scheduling things over holidays, but every school and community is different, and there's different levels of awareness, and I am tired of apologizing to communities when we have scheduled something on somebody's important holiday, and it seems like we, we just need to be more explicit, given the changing demographics of our district. And I think that's what we told the students we were gonna do.
Yeah, I think my understanding was that we were gonna put, highlight the dates on the calendar and operationalize it next year. Is that, is that what we were talking about? Yeah, that was my, that's my recollection.
Okay. Additional questions? If you want to move this on to our next topic.
Yeah, one additional thing is, we also had talked about the district sending something to OSAA about OSAA events on some of these dates, and I don't know if that's something that collectively the board or superintendent, the superintendent of the board can send to OSAA, because they are beyond our control, but if enough districts weigh in eventually, so I'd like to recommend in some way signal to OSAA that we'd like them to do that.
Yeah, and happy to partner with my colleagues here in the county as well, given there's a lot of overlap with our events that they possess in the two countries.
Great. Thank you for the conversation. It sounds like there's a couple follow-up items, not for the adoption of this calendar, which we'll come back to as in our next board meeting, but for a discussion about the 24, 25 calendar. Is there any specific action item?
Well, I thought I heard Jonathan say that maybe there'd be a way to, through an icon or something.
So do some graphic design on our calendar.
I think, I do think that would.
Little bold box around the date.
Around the date. We'll work on it.
I also think, just because I like won't be here, obviously, for the process next year concerning the calendar, making sure that we're getting like at least some student eyes on it, so that we can make sure that we're really ensuring that students also are getting voice in the process, since obviously those are the days they have to go to school, so, yeah, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you for your comments and feedback, you know, we'll definitely take that again.
Appreciate the conversation and drafting the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Cogan, as always.
Next up, we're gonna move to discipline data, and we have an update on student discipline data. Chair Scott, can we ask for clarification on this last agenda item? So, we heard, I think, at least from three board members, that there's a desire to explore no school on two of these days, so I just want to make sure we're.
So right, I heard, that's what I was, I heard that for the 24, 25-year calendar, but I guess I refer to my colleagues again, if there was a desire to change this calendar, which presents a little bit of a time crunch, but.
I think we're in the same boat we were last year, where we have a calendar, we would have to go to bargaining, there's a lot of, that.
You have to be funded, because we have to extend the school year by those.
So then the question would be, would those be just holidays or unpaid date, like all of that? So that, that's the conversation we, I thought we were having this year, I thought staff was having this year, that we obviously weren't, so that we need to say, we'd like to explore that, of taking at least those two days off based on the student feedback we received, looking at, like Liz said, through the, what criteria are we using to decide that, making sure that we're doing it in an equitable way, that considers all of our cultures and communities, and then have that conversation about, to be really clear that the board is looking at, we'd like to be inclusive of these holidays as days off school based on student feedback. And we did try to follow up with some of those students, and a lot of them left college, and so have not been as available, but I think that would be for next year, because there are some major considerations.
Yeah.
I'm just disappointed, because I feel like we are where we were a year ago, and there was a miscommunication or a ball drop somewhere between policy and staff and the calendar, so we just need to make sure we're clear on looking at maybe including a couple of more days off school in 24, 25, to honor some of those holidays that deeply impact students. And I know students can miss a day of school for their religious observances, and schools are flexible with that. And we did talk about the power, as a community, of recognizing and including different groups in our calendar process.
Director Rema, there's an intentional effort to add a degree of awareness around these days.
Yeah.
And there's, just want to recognize, there's multiple labor groups here to talk about, negotiate an extended work calendar.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I'm just, I do think if we lay out some really deliberate steps that are, that move us beyond where we were last year, like sending a letter, adding some sort of icons, let's say laying out sort of a deliberate process, so that we have activity now and next year, that, and the engagement of students, that that is moving us along this year versus, oh, we just started doing the repeat of last year.
Yeah.
But I think we should be, like, memorialize it and be explicit in what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Clarification on the deliverable.
And I'm gonna say one other final thing, which is probably very unpopular, but there is another way to be more equitable with the calendar, which is to ignore religious holidays across the board.
Yeah.
And I think that is something there are members of our community that, you know, might go in that direction as well, and I, I just, you know, we can have that conversation.
There's a conversation about winter break, is it the most conducive time to the academic calendar? Should we move winter break is?
We are a public school, and whether we should be thinking about religion in terms of our overall calendar, I think is an interesting academic question, one I won't push too hard, but one that I think, a perspective that should not be lost in the conversation, so.
Now, if you want to get rid of spring break, you can.
As long as we call it spring solstice, I'm good. With that, we're gonna move on to discussion discipline data. Superintendent Gure.
Yes, one of our big agenda items this evening is continued conversations on a regular basis around all of our indicators, student outcomes, and make sure we're got the factors monitoring. So tonight, we're featuring a conversation, Dr. Adams is gonna walk us through student discipline data, so, get some explicit understanding around particularly obstacle suspensions and expulsions as part of that conversation, so. The instructional time or the exclusion has an impact on learning and achievement, so we'll get into that conversation, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bernard Adams.
Before he starts, are there gonna be pause breaks for questions? Because I don't want to mess up what we got going on, so, is it gonna be like every four slides, then a pause? What is that gonna look like tonight?
I think we could, I think, you know, can create natural pauses around the types of disciplinary data we were presenting, we can sort of pause for questions.
I'm learning. I just want everybody to know that I'm learning.
I appreciate that clarification, and I think when I went through, I think you're right, there're gonna be some natural breaks.
There's some natural breaks.
We'll open it up for quick conversations, and then move on to the next section. Great.
When you use acronyms, when you say them out, when you go to that page, there's some you've just embedded in yet, but.
Oh, sure.
That'd be helpful.
Absolutely. All right, so Jay and I are happy to be here with you this evening. This evening, we intend to talk about, just briefly, the continuum of student behavioral support and progressive discipline in PPS. We want to talk about what our data are telling us right now, and then what our ongoing response to our student discipline data actually is. A good reporter never buries the lead, and that lead, our lead here in PPS is that our disciplinary data unfortunately mirrors national trends, and those trends are very much unfortunate. Black students in PPS are three and a half times more likely to be referred, excluded, or sent to disciplinary hearings than are their white peers. Our native students are two and a half times more likely to experience this, and our Latino students are 1.2 times more likely to experience the same. What's more, our students with disabilities are two times more likely to experience disciplinary action than are their known disabled peers. What's most troubling at our, most troubling about our data is that we know from research that there are strong links between school discipline, likelihood of dropping out, and eventual arrest, and possible incarceration. I believe these data are an urgent call for change and action, and we are working hard to make a difference. Tonight, as Jay and I share data, Chief Bruno is gonna close with our current action steps to attempt to interrupt these data patterns.
So, before we go into the data, I'm gonna talk a little bit about who we strive to be and our contained supports that we have in place. At PPS, we are guided by our community's vision, a portrait of the ways our graduates will enter the world, more confident, optimistic, prepared for the future, and how we as educators and system as a whole must nurture their collective brilliance. Our strategic plan outlines the roadmap for in which we will do this. Our graduate portrait, which is our vision, our team-based skills, dispositions our graduates possess by the time they graduate from PPS. Our educator essentials include the attributes, knowledge, skills, mindsets, and dispositions needed from adults to support the graduate portrait, and we lead with a commitment for racial equity and social justice, because we recognize the creation and perpetuation of racial inequities have been baked into the educational institutions, and that racial inequities across all indicators for education will success are deep and pervasive. We believe in the fundamental right of human dignity, and the generating and equitable world requires educate, an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression. So, the PPS continuum of supports for student behavior includes specific strategies for prevention, strategies for intervention, and systems of response. So, Public Schools is a multi-tiered system of support districts, so MTSS. We provide a continuum of support with students at the center through our framework. MTSS is a framework that focuses on the whole child, supports academic growth and achievement, and also focuses on behavior and social emotional needs and attendance. MTSS is focused on using equitable evidence-based instruction, intervention, and assessment practices to ensure that every student receives the level of support needed based on their identified need. Attention is focused on creating and sustaining tier one or universal supports in all of our classrooms, tier two or targeted supports when students need additional time or instruction, and tier three supports, which are individual systems of help to eliminate barriers in learning and enable every student successfully reach their potential, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like in PPS in a minute. Included within the system in PPS, which is different than other systems, it includes transformative social emotional learning, which T-cell transforms social emotional learning is centered around providing instruction and opportunities to practice self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making skills. It's the process where students and staff build stronger, respectful, and lasting relationships that facilitate co-learning to examine causes of inequity and develop collaborative solutions to, that lead to personal community and social mobility. In addition, we support restorative justice with practices focused on building community, culture, and relationships in our classrooms. And all of this is rooted in trauma-informed practices or strengths based on service delivery approaches. They're all grounded in understanding the responses that's an impact of trauma. The Office of Student Support Services supports all of our buildings and implementation of this continuum, and we are at different places in implementation of the things that I've discussed. And we support policy and administrative directive guidance, professional learning in systems, training and support restorative justice, SCL, and attendance strategies. We support data monitoring and targeting and responding to student needs in schools, and leadership and collaboration through our school climate teams, our instructional leadership teams, our PLCs, and community partnership and family engagement plans. And then we engage stakeholders in processes and support policy, a process for procedure development through our student contact to discipline manual. So I'm gonna talk a little bit more specifically about the components of our MTSS framework, which includes the systems and structures of restorative justice. So tier one, our core instruction, is where all students receive challenging grade-level core instruction and have equitable access to high-quality, universal-designed academic behavior and social emotional resources. It integrates cultural-sustaining pedagogy and is linguistically responsive, and this is what's outlined in our instructional framework. Tier one is universal access to essential grade-level standards and behavior and instructional practices, and support school-wide expectation, wellness, and climate, and school community in each of our PPS classrooms. This includes delivery of our core counseling curriculum, school-wide social-emotional practices delivered both in the classroom and by our school counselors, and responding and supporting community and family engagement practices. Core instruction is supported by professional learning communities, which are teacher teams that respond to student needs, both behaviorally and academically, and our school climate committees and instructional leadership teams in each one of our schools. Support is provided by our classroom teachers, our school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, school nurses, for example, in some cases, and other service support providers that we've assigned to our buildings. Implementation in these tier one systems results in improved outcomes for students, improved academic achievement, social emotional confidence, and significant reductions in behavior when fully supported. Targeted interventions are the additional time and support guided through our SIP teams, which are school intervention teams, that focus on supporting key behavioral practice and social emotional skills, and in essence is translated into additional teaching time in a small group or individual support for students. Tier two, social emotional interventions are delivered by classroom teacher or other service providers, including our school counselors or social workers or psychologists that are assigned to our schools. A tier two example of something that you may have heard about is an evidence-based intervention called check and connect. These are specific things that we work each one of our school teams and our SIP teams on, supporting how to respond to students when the tier one or universal supports are not effective. Tier three supports are intensive interventions that includes individualized supports for students with lagging skills, and focus on essential behavior practices. This includes individual counseling services, maybe support from an external provider or a community partner, mentoring with additional, or mental health services, care coordination, safety and behavior planning. It focuses both academic and social emotional, and is organized and supported by our SIP teams, in addition to having external teams, and you may have heard descriptions related to a rapid response team, which is a team a district supports providers that go to schools and respond when schools are struggling with student needs. Restorative practices are incorporated across all tiers. Restorative practices improve and focus first on school classroom climate and community building, and then promote and support social emotional skill development, and increase safety in buildings, through providing opportunities for decreasing conflict and de-escalating situations, repairing relationships as a result of the community and/or relationship being harmed or impacted. In PPS, we focus significantly on building relationship, doing community circle, and providing accountability and support for students, and we have a team that works with our buildings to provide additional support, training, and even provide tier three or response through restorative conferences or circles when our school teams need additional systems.
Are we pausing?
We're about to, yes. Teacher and me was gonna ask us questions about.
Can you talk about how, what those individual student support teams look like, how they work?
Individual support teams, and so when we, when a SIP team identifies that a student isn't responding to intervention that has been outlined, it'll be members of that team with the view of the engagement and functional assessment of behavior, to understand what it is that's creating. That involves bringing in family and community members, talking, and involving teachers. That involves bringing in family and community members, talking, and involving teachers is completing a comprehensive assessment, and then they create a behavior support plan as a result of that, and then implement those strategies. And so it's, for a student, it may involve additional time with a QMP, it may involve specific reteaching or support of student, it may involve accessing a community provider as a mentor. The responses are pretty varied, but it's all based on the individual student need versus where tier two is. Both an individual team or it's also, could be a group.
Are most of those resources that you just described within a given building, or external, or both?
That is all primarily used on using the support services within the building, and then when our teams indicate or identify that the needs are more complex, we have structures and strategies for them to reach out, and that's when our K-team, our rapid response team, or even members of our special education team come in and provide additional support coaching for kids and for teams.
You had mentioned that it would bring, you would look at bringing in community members, mentors, different ones, and then you also mentioned that, that for the most part, these are programs that were already within the school system, within that school. So, because I'm a Roosevelt guy, everybody knows, I'm just going to pick on Roosevelt because they're comfortable with me picking on them, and they don't feel bad because I stand their name no matter what. So presuming that this is a kid at Roosevelt that's struggling, are we saying that the SIP team would identify mentors that are already within the Roosevelt School? Or is this someone within the Roosevelt community that they have an influence on this student that might be coming in to mentor, mentor this student, and work with them to help get them on track?
It could be and should be both, depending upon the need and what the students responded to.
Okay, so then that brings me to my, the second part of that question.
Are you serious?
Because I was actually hoping the kids go that route. And so with that in mind, because now, if this program or this mentor is not a part of one of our current RESJ partners, but yet they're working with the student, then how do they become an official LEAD to work with this student within the school system, understanding that without an ROI in place, that it's going to be hard to release information? So now, is this mentoring organization, are they simply responsible for like, if you work with a parent and you get the ROI, so that we can get this release of information, then you get that information back to us, so that we know that you have an ROI on file, then we can, because what I'm trying to figure out is outside of, outside of saying, "Thank you," how is this mentor that's coming into the system going to know what the student needs, where they need the additional supports? Where they, is this an absenteeism issue? Are they having chronic absenteeism? Are they missing certain classes? Are they struggling? Is this a sped issue? Like meaning that they got in, you know? So how are they going to know that? And at what point does the, the school, or what does the school need in order to release the appropriate information to the mentoring program that's going to be working with the students, so that we can get the results that we need? Because that's where we get crippled at right now. We get a lot of people wanting to help, but because they don't have certain things in place, they get told, "Oh, I'm sorry, I wish I could help you, but you know, you're not part of our system." So...
I am wondering, and so I'm trying to answer that right off the top of our heads, if we might not be able to provide you a written response as to how people can come into working agreements with schools and the school system, because I want to make sure we aren't misspeaking in the moment.
I like writing.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no.
It's the H.B. For Beauty, we're going like around the line.
Okay. H.B. For Beauty would be, I guess, this week. So I have a question. So you led with the racial outcomes data. How is, what we're looking at, I'm sorry, jumping around on tabs, how are we taking that data into account and operationalizing, like working to change those outcomes?
Right, we're going to talk about that as we go through the presentation.
Okay.
I was wondering, obviously, we monitor how successful all of this support is via, like our discipline data. Is there any way, do we like garner feedback from like principals and the school climate teams themselves, or the members of like, what's the acronym, the SIP teams? Do we ever like get any feedback from them in terms of like on the ground, how they feel the programs are successful? Or like from our school counselors, et cetera?
Well, I think we have staff in the central office, like we have someone who oversees and supports all the school counselors, and he meets with the school counselors on a regular basis. We have our school supervision team, the chief of schools, the assistant suits, the senior directors who meet with principals on a regular basis, and we also meet with a group of principals on a monthly basis to talk about how things are going in the operat- Of all the things and practices and supports that we need to have in place, so there is and are mechanisms for us to have a feedback loop.
And what about for students? I know, obviously, like in some of this, like in terms of the policy, but I especially look at like the social emotional learning, and I, do we ever hear from students back on like how they feel like the success of some of our measures are, like whether they feel like the work that we're putting down is really affecting the discipline? And also, I don't know students directly, or like the right person to go to necessarily. I hear that you're obviously talking to principals, but I just wonder if in any capacity, we speak with students at all in terms of like how we manage disciplinary action and what like we're putting in place?
Yeah, so I'd say that we primarily get that feedback as the district office through the providers that interact and engage with our students every day, and they regularly identify for us in these job-like meetings that Dr. Evan referred to, the things that are being affected and things, how it is that we can be more effective. In addition to that, many of our schools do, and I learned this through supporting them, these very same processes do like affinity spaces and those type of things where we get feedback on how it is we are responding to the disciplinary, our social emotional learning instruction, what, you know, all of the things that you identify.
And we hear, I'm sorry, your presentation, I was on. But we also really hear our student voices loudly when we do our successful school survey, and we ask questions like, you know, "Do you feel like you belong? Do you have a strong sense of community within your school?" And that really helps the student support services division or office to really plan for how we can build programming to ensure that students feel, feel that they belong and that their voices...
And ideally, that is tailored to the specific results from the individual building, like in their school improvement plan and stuff.
Exactly, in their continuous improvement plan, and what we offer to building leaders is, don't wait until the next survey administration. If students have identified that they don't feel like they're safe, or they don't feel like they belong, start having focus groups with the students in your building to unpack that, because that's the only way to really understand that. And we tried to model that this year in August leadership by having a student panel and reinforcing that idea with principals, and so I'm hopeful that more and more are taking that up as a part of their practice.
May I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, where are we seeing this being effective? Like I know when Richard Smith was at Lent, there was a drop in referrals, right? This is statistically significant drop in students being referred as part of some of the tiers of support that were put in place there. Are we seeing other schools where we've seen some effectiveness in reducing some of the discipline data that we're being, that we're seeing?
I think, okay, let's make sure no one else is going to time.
You're like, "Help me out back there." Kimberly.
As an exemplar, I can hold Principal Lathan, Chrisanthias Lathan up. I know she's into practice, some procedures for her and her administrative team, where instead of students being referred out, they push into the classrooms, so that the teacher can have conversation with the student and come to some resolution, some restorative nature in that way, and she's seeing a difference.
And where is she again? She's at Salem.
At Salem.
Yeah. And we're seeing...
There's a pretty compelling piece that she gave, and you can see that on the video at the marketing session, she talked about that.
I had a question about how we measure success. I mean, I'm sure we can do like a straight count of disciplinary referrals, but are there other metrics of success that we use to, I see some head nodding, other metrics of success that we say, "Well, we've done a great job in this building overall," rather, in addition to the climate survey?
Who was nodding behind me? Don't be shy.
Yeah.
I'd like to share that with the class. Let's cover.
Feel left out.
Couple examples. So I appreciate the question. There are a couple of things, and there, one of the key pieces that came from the successful school survey, that I think, I can speak to every high school, built in a school improvement goal around connection and a sense of belonging for high school students. So we see it in every high school plan. So what that shows up as is there are specific steps that they're taking. So to go back to Director Green's Roosevelt High School, they, part of the plan, there's a tiered approach, but the first part was to do empathy interviews. So they worked with students last spring to say, "What is working, what's not? How can we get you engaged in classrooms?" And then they built strategies based on that, that then they put into their school improvement plan, and they tracked, and we are looking at some improvement in attendance based on those strategies. So we see where that is showing up and that follow-through that is happening in specific schools with that intentionality, that you're starting to see, like how do you go from the general questions from the successful school survey into specific actions that then we track over time through the continuous improvement process and a quarterly review of data? The other piece I would say that we did with the school improvement plans and looking at specific strategies was that principals presented those to each other, and then also to leadership. And we're looking for, as you're describing, promising practices that not only can we identify what's happening locally, but what is going to be transferable to another site and then scale.
Thank you.
Good job.
And I'm just going to add that at the K-five, K-eight level, what we've done is try to make sure that there is a sense of belonging at the school, because our kids are so much younger, so it is important for our teachers to know how to communicate with them, to know how to wrap arms around them, to know how to make sure that they feel a part of the community. So what we ask our schools to do is to identify the committees that they can be on, where the students, they can hear student voices, they can also support students and families as they come on campus. That's made remarkable changes at some of our buildings. I can be specific about elementary, for example. They've just done a remarkable job this year, and that's one of them. So where the committees are working and the committees are specific to the schools, we told them committees, but we didn't tell them exact, the exact ones for them to pick. That was based on their staffing. It's become a community of us all. We wrap arms around our young kids, and we support our communities. It's worth reading.
So I'm going to look at it from a, maybe a longer-term systemic framework. So in 2017 and 18, when the MTSS, the multiple-tiered systems of support was initially being instituted, not all students had access to tier one, and then in tier, most students didn't have access to tier two and tier three. And so, you know, when I look at the data, it's trending as, as it still is, it's trending in the right direction, and I'm assuming that's because the investments have been made in these other tiers and having a more systemic approach against, just looking back to 2017. So the specific question I'd have then is, for tier one, can, I'm going to have this question for each of the tiers, or a little bit different flavor, but do all schools have sort of tier one supports in place?
Yeah, so tier one is, it's universal, and so all students have access to it, regardless of additional programs and support. So it is translated into things like our school climate plan, which supports...
I know, it sounds like a strange question, but in 2017, it, like we didn't have that.
Well, we may not have had at the time, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's good to know that, like that's, because that's a change of the time. So, is, for tier two and tier three, would all, because originally how it got rolled out is my recollection, is that we prioritize certain schools for tier two and tier three, you know, the places where we felt it would have the biggest impact. Currently, is it accessible to all schools, or is it, are these supports, or is it still, are there still just selective supports?
Yeah, so think of, so think of tier one as, so that's our core instruction, right? It's what we provide, and all students have access to, and both in our instructional framework and our school climate plans, we implement strategies to reinforce and support both access of instruction, and then also addition to that support basic, I apologize, behavior expectations for all, for all kids. So what tier two and tier three are, so tier two is, it means that a student requires an increased amount of time and additional resource. And so all of our schools are supported and trained in the SIP process, and then specifically they identify strategies like check and connect, and just other general ways to reinforce small group or support small group instruction in the behavior expectations.
So theory, whether that was Markham, or Saban, or Lent, or Roosevelt, you'd, students would have access to tier two supports?
Yeah, they would have access to, in any community, it looks like it's different in each one of our schools, because each one of our schools creates a climate plan, and then each one of our classrooms has a classroom management plan. And then all of our schools have various social emotional providers, whether that be counselors in different levels of FTE, social workers in different levels, school climate specialists, and various other resources that are allocated to support students in addition to the core classroom teacher. So the way that it's approached, or the increased intervention time, might look slightly different at each school, but they all provided the training and capacity to deliver tier-three resources. And sometimes for tier-three resources, we are reaching outside of the school, and we're accessing, and district support staff, or even as we talked about, potentially other community resources.
And I'm sorry, just to summarize, because again, five years ago, all students didn't have access to it, so that now, within PPS, regardless of your grade level or school, it may look different, but you, there should be all tiers accessible to a student, to a student that needed it.
Maybe another way to describe it is, every school community is always developing their capacity at implementing a multi-tier. This isn't a plug-and-play, you have it or you don't. You're looking at the left side of the triangle or the inverted pyramid, the other half is the academic multi-tiered, and similarly, core tier two, tier three. And so in 2017, yeah, it was obvious that there sort of wasn't a conceptual understanding around how to implement these tiers, and sort of the foundations that are required to establish systems, expectations, climate plans, et cetera. And so we started by prioritizing cohorts of schools that we knew would really benefit at that time period, as we rolled it out and we built a central capacity to actually provide that coaching and support as well. And so now we're here, fast forward, and so all schools at this point are developing, strengthening each one of these tiers all the time, and we're able, where the data indicates, and say, "What am I going to do to add sort of another layer to the menu of interventions in any one of these tiers as well?"
But, but...
Okay.
You want to go?
Well, no, I want to note it's seventeen.
You're trying to move us along.
There's seventeen more slides that you can go through. Student Representative McMahon has...
I know, my guy, he's trying to move us along.
And I just want to make sure that...
He's doing this.
The purpose of this first section was to build understanding and not just present referral and exclusion and disciplinary...
I kept my question.
This is really, really important. I just want to play devil's advocate a little bit, because while you've described that we have the structures in place in all of our schools, and we have the expectations for their continuous improvement plans and all of that...
and we have the expectations for their continuous improvement plans and all of that, we have wildly varied staffing levels in our different schools. And our staffing levels aren't necessarily tied to the exhibited need in terms of Tier Two and Tier Three supports. They're tied to other things. So, you know, you've got huge differences in terms of mental health providers and counselors and social workers among our schools. And so that's a, that's a big factor in how we're able to support students even though the structure is there in every school. So I think that that's something that's really important to pay attention to.
It's true that we haven't evolved yet to a level of sophistication. Right now, we've been allocating additional supports mainly via school designations and.
Right, right.
If we developed a parallel menu of supports that are allocated based on behavioral data. Right, we'd have different menu and we'd have sort of a parallel set applied supports or interventions as well. So it's been a little bit less one for one. Student Representative McMahon?
I'm more than happy to hold my question.
What I was gonna, so I think, let's go ahead and move on. And my understanding, I mean, I think the rest of the presentation is data, referrals and student exclusions and so forth. Maybe you can actually go through all of that and, or can hold questions then and come back at the end to either questions about specific data or about this overall context.
Great. I just need the instructions. He gave them to me. I followed them.
So first, we're gonna share the data on our referral data. So a little bit about our referral data. Not all referrals lead to student discipline. So we have stage one referrals, which are focused on things that are redirected and supported in the classroom. And then stage two or three referrals, which can be repeated stage one issues, but then also can be more significant behaviors. We keep track of both because it's one of the ways as a system that we respond and support our schools with whatever needs maybe exist, so.
Sure. So let's take a look at our referral data, three-year comparison. This chart shows those three years, most recent year is at the top. We skipped the year of continuous distance learning. All referrals are shown in yellow. Stage one referrals are shown in purple. Stage two slash three referrals are shown in red. Additionally, we provided the rate of referrals per 1,000 students and that is shown in green. You can see that referrals decreased last school year as compared to previous school years where we had data. A natural question might be, does the decrease in referrals, is that related to our decrease in enrollment? And our understanding and looking at the dataset is not because the rate has actually changed.
Or as a percentage of it? When it goes 1,000 students across each.
When we look at percent of referrals versus percent of enrollment by grade level, you can see very noticeably that most, the greatest percentage and proportion of referrals are happening in the middle grades, even though the middle grades are our lowest proportion of student enrollment across the district.
Right.
As I mentioned earlier, our disciplinary data show a disproportionate impact on black and brown students. This graph shows the extent of the disproportionality across all student racial groups. Student enrollment percentages are shown in blue, while student referral percentages are shown in red. In an ideal world, the red and blue bars would be the same size for all student groups, but they aren't. This is what we refer to as disproportionality. For example, here, our African-American students are eight and a half percent of the student population and they account for nearly 23% of the student referrals. On the other hand, white students are nearly 56% of our enrollment and account for only 41% of our disciplinary referrals. On this chart, we focus on our students with disabilities as table rather. While referrals have also decreased since 2018, 2019, you'll note that students with disabilities are still referred at twice the rate of their enrollment. Thirty point seven percent of referrals were for students with disabilities, while last year, they were just a little over 15% of the student enrollment. This data pattern has been consistent over the last three in-person school years. Next, we'll talk about exclusions.
Exclusions include suspensions, in-school suspensions and expulsions. Being a student is always a built-in resort, but there are times where it is necessary to implement exclusionary discipline. Our focus on establishing a welcoming school climate and supporting socio-emotional skills and having restorative practices doesn't mean that we, there isn't accountability when a violation of student conduct exists. And so the next set of data, you'll see actually similar trends to referrals with across multiple years.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Can you remind us where the discretion lies for in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions and exclusions?
So we.
Terms of teacher.
So the discretion related to the implementation of discipline, it lies with the administrator. It's a result of the administrator's investigation and understanding of the unique circumstances related to that event, characteristics of a student developmental age and those various factors. In addition to that, we have provided as support a student conduct and discipline manual, which has suggestions for administrators related to how to respond and level of seriousness of behavior.
Here is before. We have three-year trend data on exclusions. All exclusions in totality are shown again in yellow. In-school suspensions are in blue. Out-of-school suspensions are in red. And the rate of exclusions per 1,000 students is shown in green. As was the case with referrals, the number of exclusions is down compared to 2018, 2019. You'll recall that 1920 was a year that in-person school was interrupted, excuse me, due to the pandemic. So those counts only go through March and don't go through the school year, which might be a reason why they look a little bit lower.
I also think it's important to note that as we look at this, that 21, 22 was when kids came back and we heard a lot about behaviors and kids struggling to be in classrooms. And so the fact that that data is lower than 1819 is fascinating.
I think one of the things I am listening for when I'm hearing people say that is I'm hearing that the magnitude of the behavior or the intensity of the need seems greater.
Yeah.
So it does not surprise me that we don't necessarily see that in an uptick in referrals.
Yeah, well, and I'm wondering if.
When a student came back dysregulated from a time away from their peers and their teachers.
I'm thinking that our MTS support's working, right, to help students recover.
And we also have more supports because we had our SRO support.
If we look at this by grade band, again, you'll see that most of our exclusions are happening to our students in middle school. And when we look at the disproportionality, it rings true again that our African-American students, eight and a half percent of the population in here, nearly 27% of all exclusions, again, that's in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, disciplinary hearing, referral, or expulsion. We think about our students with disabilities, again, you'll see that they're at least twice as likely to be excluded. For last school year, while they were only 15% of the population, they accounted for 38% of all the exclusions. Finally, we're gonna talk about disciplinary hearing data.
So we hold disciplinary hearings for severe incidents when expulsion is being considered. The hearings are being conducted by independent hearings officers and involve our building administration and families and the student often. In this last year, during the 21, 22 school year, there are 252 discipline hearings scheduled. Forty-two percent of those hearings were related to either repeated alcohol, drug possession issues or use or physical attack or harm. 154 of those hearings resulted in delayed expulsion, which means that an alternative plan was put in place versus an expulsion, which includes some sort of safety process and then an intervention or multiple interventions for the student, meaning some students accessing our student success center. Twenty of the hearings did result in expulsion. Eleven of those involved weapons, not including firearms. And then four of the 20 were through appeal or modified and turned into, where the student was returned with an alternative plan. A hundred of the 252 hearings included students from the ninth year, 504. Forty-four of those hundred did not conclude in expulsion. Thirty-six of them were determined to be manifestations of the student's disability. And then three of them did result in expulsion.
When we look at our three-year data around expulsion hearings, it is a little different than referrals and exclusions. Disciplinary hearings have actually increased since 1819 by 10 hearings and from, you know, 242 to 252. And also you'll note that the rate per 1,000 students is also up a little bit from 4.9 per 1,000 students to 5.5.
What do we attribute that to?
I cannot say exactly what it could be attributed to at this moment with any, if I had a sense of certainty, I have a certainty to share. When we look at disproportionality along the lines of disciplinary hearings or proposed expulsions, again, you'll see that our white students are underrepresented in these data. Our students of color, our African-American students in particular, also our Native American students are overrepresented, as are our students who are multiracial but have ancestries other than being white or Asian. And so all of PPS's disciplinary data are disproportionate. And as I've said, this is persistent, it's generational, it's not acceptable. We must, are taking steps to interrupt, try to interrupt these patterns. And now Jay's gonna talk a little bit about what our response is moving forward and we'll be ready to take questions.
Yes, so student discipline practices are closely related to student engagement and achievement. The instructional framework for educational equity is focused on data during grade level culturally affirming teaching, engaging instruction and learning in our classrooms and combining that with high-quality instructional materials and professional learnings. That will have a significant impact on consumer behavior and student response. Additionally, our student conduct and discipline policy identifies that these strategies are to be implemented to reduce the need for disciplinary actions, those being a positive school climate, clear and consistent student behavioral expectations, trauma-informed and effective classroom management strategies, parent family or guardian engagement, culturally relevant instruction and developmentally appropriate practices. These strategies keep students and students' individual needs at the center of practice and focus on prevention and proactive school discipline practices. Keeping students at the center means that the unique needs, development and characteristics of each individual student and situation are constantly taken into account when addressing disciplinary responses versus universal responses or in flexible guidelines or specific requirements as a response to a certain behavior. Prevention in relationship is the most effective way to make disparities in school discipline. Prevention can mean many things. Research has shown that schools have fewer discipline issues when students believe the school is safe and that the rules are enforced very well. This is accomplished through implementation of Tier One strategies that we've talked about, our core support systems and climate plans and building community and building relationships in the classroom with students. Further, staff who work to prevent issues through implementation of our classroom management plan focused on positive behavior supports, socio-emotional learning, building community and establishing relationships with students as opposed to focusing specifically on school rules and the student code of conduct, receive or provide fewer discipline for both the students. In addition, we know, the research supports, the school with the rate of suspension are more likely to use restorative justice. Restorative justice within an MTSS framework aligned with trauma, transformative socio-emotional learning is a powerful approach that focuses on building community and relationships and repairing harm through inclusive processes that engage all stakeholders. Implemented well, RJ shifts the focus of discipline from punishment to learning and from an individual to the community. It's a holistic approach to behavior and our focus is on building community and social emotional safety in our schools and addressing the root causes and addressing the harm when it occurs to restore the community and the relationship. Trauma-informed strategies is a term frequently used, but not always understood. Trauma-informed strategies are strengths-based service delivery approaches that are grounded in an understanding of the responses to the impact of trauma. That emphasizes physical, psychological, emotional safety for students. So we are in year three of our five-year implementation plan, outlined in our strategic plan for implementation, priorities outlined in MTSS, RJ, T cell, and focusing, and continuing that focus and development and support of our staff will have an impact. This fall, in addition, we aligned our administrative directive for student conduct and discipline with the board's policy. And we updated our student conduct and discipline handbook, which had not been updated for many years, that embraces and supports practices that are. And last but not least, engaging our families as they are an important component of student discipline. And we know that research identifies that schools with lower suspension rates have strong family, community, social partnerships. So with that, we're, take any questions you might have or just a discussion?
Add questions? All right, so I'm gonna start with, should I presume that all of the referrals are being made by teachers?
A referral can actually be made by any adult in the building.
Any adult in the building, okay. So then do we have data that shows which adults in the building are making the most referrals?
We have the capacity to do that, yes.
Okay, so then I want to see, the reason that I'm bringing this up is because we often, everybody, especially now, especially now, everybody is, you know, harping on, you know, oh, we don't want SROs in schools because they're untrained and they don't know this and they're causing harm to the school and they're increasing capacity for, you know, the school-to-prison pipeline. When, and although I'm not gonna fight with anybody about that right now, I also want to add another, another thing to consider, which is the officer in the classroom is called to the scene by somebody within the building. And so the somebody that's making the call is oftentimes the same individual that's making the referral to move black boys out of a classroom, and this is being done out of fear. So if we're going to attack the issue, then we need to attack the issue all the way around and hold the party responsible for making the accusation about the behavior. How are we making sure that they get trained? And I'm bringing this up because we're in PAT negotiation and we need to start holding these white teachers accountable. Now, it's safe for me to presume that the bulk of the, the bulk of the people making the referrals are white because the bulk of the staff in our buildings is white. And so therefore, the person making the claim against this black student is oftentimes a white person who is struggling with fear of this big black student that happens to be in middle school. So if we're, if we're going to, we need to call the baby ugly and the baby is just ugly and then we need to deal with it. And so what are we going to do? I want to see. I want to see, I would like to see, I would like to see the data around who's making the referrals, the bulk of these referrals. And then I'd like to see the data that around what type of training that we're making sure that those individuals are getting so that they're not consistently calling police to a bad situation or kicking black students out of a classroom. We all understand the value of seat time. We just sat here and talked about, we need 180 something hours and we're struggling to get there with 174, and yet we're kicking more black kids out of the classroom so they're not even getting their, their 184. And so that goes to a 74. So then you mentioned high-quality learning. Does high-quality learning include kicking out the students in the class who are struggling to understand and therefore exhibiting a possible behavior? Because it's, I would rather be considered someone who makes jokes than to be considered someone who's dumb. So I make jokes in the classroom and because a teacher is not able to, to see that I'm really struggling, you kick me out of your class, which further limits my ability to learn and get a good quality education. So again, going back to accountability, the first level of accountability has to be the individual that's kicking kids out of the classroom. And then, which leads to another thought that I had around, and I pray that somebody else is scribing because I can give you my paper, but that's about all I got.
We're getting, it's recorded.
Fantastic. So somebody can go back and transcribe. This is wonderful. I love the system. With that being said, the, you mentioned restorative justice, that restorative justice is a key factor in, in the behaviors and the referrals and all of that. So I'm curious as to what are we putting in place to ensure that restorative justice is more than just a term that we use and that all the parties involved are required, mandated to stay at the table and take accountability for the role that they play? Because again, restorative justice is supposed to be circular, it's supposed to be about the circle, and everyone at the, at the party at the table had something to do with it. Or are we calling restorative justice, make the kid say he's sorry for what he did without the teacher being accountable for the role that they played and the kid responding the way that he did? Because currently, and unless things have changed, our teachers don't always come to the table and stay there. They, they require a, a union rep and they require other things as where the, the student is forced to sit down and eat this garbage and say they're sorry in order to come back to class. So what are we putting in place? Again, I'm bringing this up because it's contract time. So what are we putting in place that says, no, you have to stay at the table? And what happens when the teacher has to be the one to say, they're sorry, that I made the mistake, that I shouldn't have responded to you the way that I did, that the problem was not yours, but that it was, it was mine, and then I gotta eat that in front of the class because you get it where you gave it? So if you did this in front of the class, you need to come back to the class and let everybody know that Teacher John or Teacher Susan or Teacher whomever, whatever it is, I messed this up. This was not their fault and I'm sorry. And so what are we doing about that? And then I can come back around because, and because Gary, now I'm raising my hand for Gary. And so because Gary has also got some, some questions.
Byron's had her hand up.
And so that's why I say, that's why I'm saying I can, I'm gonna come back around, but when I raise my hand the second time, it'll be because I got Gary's questions.
And I really appreciate that.
No, Director Green, you, you did all, you don't even have to worry about my questions because you, your, your statement was part of my question, so you're good.
Okay.
So a lot of what, I appreciate your statements, Director Green. A lot of what you talk about is under, the undercurrent there that needs to be in place are true relationships between teachers and students. Because when you have true relationships, you can apologize to students when you've made an error in your judgment or you, I told Ailey she was doing something wrong and it wasn't Ailey, it was Byron and on that. You know, the most, one of the most powerful moments I've had as a teacher was when I had to apologize to students. And so, but you have to be in relation, true relationship. And so part of what I believe we're trying to get at through part of the systems instructors are putting in place, including what our teachers have asked for, which is anti-bias, implicit bias, and racial equity training, is helping people learn how to be in relationship with people that are different from them.
And I agree with you 100% in what I'm looking at because we're in this season that we're in right now. We're in an opportune season, I mean, I see it as an opportune moment, is in the absence of true relationship, policy. Because if you don't have true relationship, then if I have a policy that says I get to hold you accountable, I have to, if you don't want to come to the trough, I will drag you here. I may not make you drink, but you ain't gonna leave the trough until you start figuring out whether or not this trough, this space is for you or not. So in the absence of true relationship, what we need is levels of policy in place where we can hold people accountable for all of their actions. Why are you calling, why are you calling for, for this same issue that if we do a poll, white students are getting a slap on the wrist? Because that's the other thing. Because when you talk to some of the black students and you talk to some of the, the kids of color who have been, who've been, you know, looked at and are dealing with this beha, these behavior issues, they'll tell you so-and-so did the same thing and they didn't, they didn't do nothing or nothing happened to them. So-and-so had their headphones in and they was just told to put them away. I had my headphones in and they took them. So-and-so had their phone out and they was told to put it on silent. I had my phone out and they took it. So what we're seeing, what we're seeing across the board, and I could be making this stuff up, I could be making this, I could be lying. And so, you know, don't, don't take it from me. Let's ask, let's go ask the kids. Let's go ask the kids. Let's go ask the parents. Let's go look at the, you know what I'm saying, play the tapes back from some of the stuff from the, the exclusion hearings that we're hearing and all the things that led up to that. Because you don't just get to an exclusion, it was led up to it. And so let's look at all the things that led up to it that could have got stopped here. We, we, we need to get back to the, to the source. And again, I'm saying all this because this is an opportune time. Everybody is talking about it right now. We want to hold the police accountable and we don't want SROs back in the school. We want accountability and, and they're, they're messing up our system and kids can't learn and they're, and I'm not even gonna argue and say you're wrong. I'm gonna also offer that kids also can't learn if they're not in the class. So let's hold the people accountable for making those or getting those kids out of class the same way that we want to hold these people accountable. Let's hold these people accountable. Now, if we start talking about it from the same platform, if we start talking about it with the same level of intensity, the same level of urgency, we need to do something about it, we need to get them out. And I'm, the reason I'm bringing that up here is because when this stuff comes to the board, it's going to come to the board as rah rah rah, this is bad and y'all need to make sure that this don't happen. We also need to make sure that this doesn't happen. And so that the same level of intensity that we're going to be like, no, we can't do this, we need to come right back around and say, and we ain't doing this. So if they can't do it, you can't either. If they can't intimidate the students, you can't either. If they can't call them or take them for no reason, you can't either. So I'm just saying, make it level across the board. I'm not, I'm not jumping on either side. I'm just saying what's good for the goose is good for the gander. That's what the old folks told me. And I'm done.
Thank you, Dr.
100%.
Byron, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just wondering, and it was funny, I turned over and I was like, oh, like obviously as a student I know what a referral is, but when in this board perspective, I was like, I wonder if it's the same thing. So if I'm lacking a little foundational knowledge here, I have gotten zero. Actually, I've only been to the principal's office once in my life and it wasn't disciplinary thing, probably because I'm white though, so.
I didn't hear this right.
I was teasing, you don't have to.
I was just wondering, so do we have any information? And, hold on, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'll start from the top. Referrals are supposed to help, like you get one and then the goal would be that you wouldn't get another. Because we, we put in this preventative step and then like, you know, you get referred or then, you know, it becomes an issue, so then we address that issue and students will no longer get them. Do we have any information on whether that's true? Like when students get a referral, it's like they do get another one or what percentage of students get another one or what percentage of students move? And you could also get like two-stage-one referrals or is it like you get a stage one and then you're immediately sent to a stage two?
You can get.
Okay. And then I guess I'd also be interested then, when students get one, are they more or less likely to proceed like higher up on that like thing? Or do they get another stage one or are they then pushed up further because, you know, their student's a problem student or something like that?
Yeah, like how many of these numbers on repeat?
And I don't know if that's like, but I think that would be really interesting to see like how successful the referral process actually is.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. I mean, I don't have that.
Yeah, of course.
Dig into more to see if I can get that.
And before we go into your director, I just, Byron, thanks. That was actually a question I had and it's funny that you got it on. Be glad that I was not in your data because I got a lot of referrals. So your numbers would have been much higher. But I, I sort of related to that from a policy perspective. I think I know the answer, but I just want to confirm. Have we eliminated all of the sort of mandatory progressive discipline policies or procedures in our, in our district? Like, I guess what I'm getting is, do we have the discretion? You have a student who gets a referral and then gets another referral. Do we have the discretion at, at that building level to sort of determine, you know, these are, these are separate items, these are separate issues that should be dealt with, you know, separate tier ones? Or, or maybe they're not, right? And they, they are combined. And what I'm getting at is, is I, I think that, that you need to make sure that folks, you know, on the ground have that discretion and they're not being forced into something by a policy that says, hey, if a kid gets three referrals in two weeks, then they automatically go to some, some additional level of discipline. Just curious.
So, so we have eliminated from a policy perspective, with the exception of possession of a firearm, all required responses from policy administrative directive and our student conduct and discipline. There are other agreements in place that right now that do have specific responses for perceived behaviors.
If you, if you watched any of the bargaining sessions, you know, you may have noticed that we're trying to strike language around a minimum mandatory five-day suspension for certain actions that students may be involved in. So that's really, the CBA is really the only place where that language, some kind of directive where principals have shared with us time and time again that their hands are tied. That's where that language currently lives.
But that's proving to be a very difficult conversation.
Thanks. I mean, and I think eliminating, eliminating those mandatory minimums does not eliminate the bias that we're talking about, but at least, at least it's a step, I think, in that direction, so.
And that got to my question that I'd asked earlier about what are we, you started with, led with that racial disproportionate impacts. How are we addressing it? I appreciate Director Green for, was that a monologue?
I don't know what it was. I need to give my thoughts.
Director Lowry had her hand up, Director Hollins has his hand up, and then Director Prim Edwards, Director Lowry?
I find the sped information that you shared with us deeply concerning. And we've heard a lot from our sped community in the last little bit. And I think the fact that, you know, of those discipline hearings, 36 of them found that the behaviors were part of the student's disability is just horrifying. And I know that our kids of color who are in special ed are then the most likely to be punished. And I do think we need to have those conversations about those educators that are making those referrals. And I wonder, do we, when something like that happens, especially with our sped students, when we say this, this discipline issue was actually part of their disability, do we go back and offer retraining for those teachers? Because there's a lot of adults along the way that were part of that. And then I just want to share a personal story from middle school, which was that a student in science class stole a rock. Like they were looking at rocks and it didn't come back to the teacher. And the teacher's response was to have all the students stay until the guilty party fessed up. So then everybody was tardy to their next class. And my child had a lot of anxiety about things like being late. So I, I went and addressed this with the teacher and said that that doesn't seem like a workable thing. And the teacher's response to me was, don't worry, your kid is a good kid. The teachers will know they were tardy and it's not their fault. And I took that to the principal and, but, but there are educators who have that mindset of the good kids and the not good ki, and, and I think that's some of, I mean, I think we all do that. We all tell stories about people and, and effects. But I was just stunned that like, oh, don't worry about it. And it's like, but I'm not talking about just my kid, it was the whole class. And then it sets them up to be like late to their next class, already in trouble when they get there, especially if they're a bad kid. And it's some of those systemic things. So I'm really wondering like, how are we doing professional development? I mean, I know the MTS we are with those kinds of mindsets about how we look at students and, and this was a first-year teacher, so, you know, learning still, but that kind of stuff just has a stunning impact on students. So that's my question, is what, what is the professional development we're currently offering, especially around sped discipline? When we find that a hearing has been around students' discipline? And what are we doing, especially around middle school teachers, especially first-year teachers, around helping them sort of have a healthy mindset around who students are?
So with a, with a student that receives special education service, well, I'll just say the disability, because the, the response and the process is the same both in special education and per student who has a 504. So when a student that has a, it received a disciplinary action that has been determined by the I E P team that it is a manifestation of the disability. So, so in essence, it's a symptom of, so we expect this behavior based upon the disability. What we do is we have, and some of this is, I'm not, this is this law. We convene an I E P or a 504 meeting where all of the service providers sit down and say basically, with parents, and say basically, we didn't hit the mark. We need to create a better plan to outline and support the students' needs. And so training and support through collaboration with professionals, peers, family, and parents to respond to and address student needs. So that's the, that's our policy.
There ever be like a disciplinary, would a letter go on a teacher's file or a disciplinary note of any kind if, if this happens that they have, I mean, you're talking about accountability. I mean, if we see this happening, especially if we see it happening multiple times, how do we keep a record of that to say, we see a teacher who, or we see a staff person at a school who's escalating behaviors with students or that is not responding to sped students in alignment with their I E P? Do we have any way to sort of track that to see if we have folks who maybe could use some retraining?
Creating, even creating harm.
Yeah.
So, so we're jumping into HR conversation? So my answer is yes. And, and, and I can provide probably on this forum examples of ways that we've held staff accountable for things like not having I E Ps even completed and/or not completing other components of due process related to protections, which includes things that are related to bias.
And I think we don't, we don't help our staff get better and grow and learn if we're not, if there is no measure of accountability. So I don't want us to like be punishing teachers necessarily, but I want us to be having those hard, you said we can do hard things, having those hard conversations about the ways we've missed the mark and taking ownership for that so we can continue to learn and grow as a school system and do better by our students.
I want to, was that related?
Yeah, it was just, just, so are referrals, are they like kind of up to the teacher's discretion in terms of what grounds they're made on? Are they up, like is there a specific criteria we set out?
So referral, it is up to the teacher as to what, related to what a referral is. So, but not all referrals lead to student, to discipline or removal. And they're followed up with by intervention team and/or administrator depending upon content.
Director Hollins, did you still have a question?
That, well, especially that one I actually just, was just asked, but I do have a couple comments. When we're talking about accountability, one, I want to make sure that for me, accountability doesn't mean discipline. It's not that someone's in trouble because we hold them accountable. You know, they're, they're not synonymous with each other. Accountability is not discipline. It's just accountability, you know, and we're, so I just wanted to make that comment. Second, secondly, when we talking about the mandatory stuff that's in the PAT contract, right? I think for us as a board, we have to make sure that it is known that that kind of language is not going to be tolerable anymore, period. You know, because once again, when, when you use that type of language, it goes all the way back to a systemic system that has not been kind to black and brown kids, you know? So I think we need to make sure we're clear on that, right? And we need to make sure that PAT and everybody knows that. And we need to make sure that PAT and everybody knows that that is something that is, for me, is non-negotiable, right? Also, when we take the, you know, and going with that, when we take the, the power away from our principals to be able to look at both sides of the story and come up with a decision, then that harms both sides. And the reason why it harms both sides is because if you have a teacher who feel that they have been harmed and are saying, okay, this kid, this kid needs to be on this mandatory sentence piece, well, you're not getting the whole story. And that not only harms the student, but that harms the teacher because then now that teacher credibility back in that classroom to where they, you know, you have some kids like, well, it wasn't like that. You know, so I think all of that plays into effect as well. The other thing too, and, and this is one of the things that we need to really look at is when we talk about experiences with our, our kids of color, that comes in with having teachers of color who looks like them there. We talk about relationships, you know, when you talk about, you know, being able to reach someone. If we continue to have a workforce that is only made up of majority one group, then that's where you get a lot of these disproportionality at because they don't necessarily understand or they don't have those relationship with those kids. So bringing in teachers of color who's actually in the classrooms is, is, is important. And I can't stress it enough, you know, so those are just some of my comments when we talk about the disciplinary pieces. But I, I agree with my colleagues, you know, on, on a lot of these issues. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Hollins. Let's go to Director Bremer Edwards and Director DePass.
Since we go back to the data, but the, the trends, so when, since the policy, certain place and more supports, it's trending in the right direction in most, in many, many cases. I would be interested in seeing like the school by school data to see what sort of range we, we have across our schools. And then, so sort of the comparison, what's the schools on which, it sounds like this already happened, like the schools on which we're seeing less referrals, not a disproportionality of the discipline. What's happening there? What kind of staff do they have? Are they, are they fully staffed? What sort of supports do they have within the school? You know, what is, you know, is that also aligned with what their school climate says? So just doing a little bit deeper dive to, I say, this, this is a big school district trend, but we know everything happens, like actually in a school, in a classroom, with individual students. So I think we have that data. So I'd be interested in the board getting that. And then a question I had on slide fifteen that just had the, the grade level break out. I'm curious about what we've seen this year, if we have anecdotal or is like any initial feedback on whether the investment we made in middle school restorative justice coordinators? There were ten schools, twelve schools, I think, middle schools that we identified for additional staff to. So I'm curious, like, have we, have we seen any sort of shift in the schools in which we made that investment? In which case, maybe, maybe all of our schools should have that, or it hasn't made a difference yet, or it's too early to tell. So that would be the question I'd have about the data. And then, this is really sixteen or seventeen or all throughout it is. When we had policy, we were having a discussion about developing the new policy, we, we actually heard from, there was a significant amount of engagement. And, and staff did a great job of hearing from parents that we didn't normally hear from. And one of the things we heard is just the impact of the sort of intersectionality between special ed and students of color, which tended to receive even more discipline than if they were only special ed or only a student of color. And so I couldn't tell from this data whether it was the same students sliced two different ways, or if we have the ability to look at that intersectionality.
We, we can look at intersectionality. I think what becomes challenging here in Portland is our groups of students of color are relatively small. And so when we start looking at intersectionality, we get down to such low numbers that we can't really talk about it publicly. We can take a look into that to see how far we could go down, but that would be, for example, you know, we have some elementary schools where they may have only four or five African-American students in the building, maybe one or two. And so when, when you talk about school by school data, it's hard to calculate disproportionality in that.
Actually, this is like a different data set. So the school by school is more of like, what do things look like in terms of, does one school have like a ton of referrals and lots of suspensions and expulsions? And then my second question is just in the overarching district data, do we, do we have that, sort of, the intersectionality?
We, we can look at intersectionality. I'm curious what questions you're interested in.
Well, what, what we heard from parents is that if you looked at that there was disproportionate discipline for students of color, but if you were, and, and special ed students, and if you were special ed and a student of color, it was even greater. And so I guess, is that still, is that still the case? Or, I guess I couldn't tell from the data whether it's same sense of students just, let's disaggregate it different ways.
Right. These data didn't include that analysis back. So if we go back and have a team look at that, Jay, that could.
And we, the special ed parents were pretty involved in the drafting of the policy. And so I'm just curious whether we, I say, I think directionally, we're heading in the right direction, it seems. I don't know. Tell me if I, am I reading that wrong? With exception of the rate, which on that last slide, it looks like in other cases, but.
The rate is down, referrals are down, exclusions are down this year compared to specifically nineteen twenty and eighteen nineteen. I would want to see more years of them being down, right? Want to say that.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not victory, it means, but if you just look at the trend line on this slide.
Yes, great.
Director DePass?
Yeah, I want to know if we have a database or if we know which activities result in expulsions or exclusions. For instance, you know, if, if my kid throws a chair across the room, are they, is there a, I, I would expect that there's a list of things that happen regularly, like there's not new behavior. Do we have a list of the behaviors that most often get referred? And, and then is there a way to, I know humans are involved, but is there a way to then, if you know that there are a list of fifty things that happen in classrooms that get referred, is there a way to address those literally by, by action and not by who the student is? In, in other words, if, if a student throws a chair, is that, is the response the same? You know what I mean? Is, is the response?
Is the response always the same anytime a student throws a chair?
Yeah, I think different.
Or is the response the same if a black and brown student and a white student throw a chair?
Yes.
I don't know which question you were getting at.
Is it, is it, are, are white students and black students for the exact same behaviors getting the same response?
The anecdotal information I can share is, you know, they aren't getting the same response. I was just talking with a colleague last week about having to present discipline data. And colleague is a parent here, and EBS has students in our schools right now. And the colleague's child reports sitting at a table with a group of black males who often wear their ball caps in the classroom or their hoods. And there are other males in that same classroom that are not black who often wear their ball caps and their hoods. And the teacher has to this point been focusing, had been focusing this table where her child and these black boys were sitting. This colleague spoke to the principal, spoke to the teacher, and some things are, some conversations are happening. But I think it would be, as a black male, growing up in this country, looking at data for as many years I've looked at it, I don't need to slice the data a different way to tell you that we're getting different responses.
Yes. Well, right. And also, there's no way to get to that data because you don't know what's not being reported.
That is always a barrier to.
But, but my question was, do we track the behaviors that are getting referrals? Because then we know what the behavior is regardless of who is doing the behavior.
We, we can.
I just, I remember my dad coming into school and saying, what was the behavior? Like, what, what exactly explained everything that actually happened?
We do have.
And then this kid needs more time in school, not less. So he'll be not staying home for five days.
We do have more time. We do have ways to understand what the behaviors are and which ones are most frequently occurring.
Right.
So we could, we could certainly take a look at that.
Is there any way to use that, though, to make a change to who's being referred? I guess is my, do we have any tools that we can use? I guess is my real question. Do we have any tools that we can use? So knowing that we know about the disproportionate outcomes, do we have a tool to track the behaviors that are, we're seeing the most fifty frequent behaviors and a way to actually level up based on the data?
I don't, I don't know that it's so much about the behavioral infraction and how a referral is coded by infraction. Moreover, the perception of, the perception of the individual who is writing the referral.
Okay, so we're, we're talking about bias. We need to solve for bias rather than solving for behavior.
Yeah, and there's, and that takes a different approach.
Yes, it does.
Slicing data to come up with a resolve, like that, that takes a different approach altogether.
I, I've got a couple, one thing, a couple of things to say. You know, when we talk about trying to narrow out the behaviors, and I, I, I get where Director DePass is going. But, you know, like Dr. Adams was saying, you know, it's not necessarily the behavior, sometimes it's just being black. And that's not going to change. You know, and so I think we really have to just call it out for what it is. You know, if, if I'm being black and I'm disabled, I'm just being black, period. You know, that's not our behavior. That's the behavior of others. And that's why we see these disproportionality and stuff, because sometimes, I'm not saying all the time, but sometimes it's just being black.
Yes, agreed.
Director Hollins, Tim?
I just first wanted to appreciate what Director Hollins was saying earlier and recognize that, that at this point, we have a high degree of discretion in our system in terms of a teacher's ability to, you know, make disciplinary referrals. And that's, that's what we're trying to solve for right now in these discussions, these contract negotiations, is there's a direct connection between the degree of discretion that individual educators have and the disproportionate results that we're seeing.
When we say we need a relationship-based system, though, discretion has to be part of that. So how do we get the bias out of that relationship? Like, that's the.
It takes both. It takes that, it takes that work upfront, but it also takes a, a culture of trying to not empower that bias.
And it takes a will.
Right.
It takes an individual will.
Right. You mean, you mean on the part of the individual educator?
It takes an individual will.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
For all the training and development, for all the coaching and support, for all the information you could share and data you can share, for each and every one of us sitting in this room, the question of bias is based on your individual will. No one can do it for you.
And take it back to where Jay grounded us at the beginning in our, our vision and our values for every educator's ability to see every child's brilliance. Teacher. And every child's work. The one other question that I had was, I would be interested in seeing the connection between our investments in our external R E S J contracts and our discipline data and our, our sense of belonging data. Because we have, we have, you know, increased those investments like fivefold over the last several years. And part of that is about, to your point, Herman, part of that is about having, having adults in the building that look like our kids. But it's more than that. It's about relationship building. So, so from a return on investment perspective, as we're going into the budget process, I want to see, is that working? Is that working in, in this arena?
I want to wrap us up.
I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just say one last thing and then I'm done. You know, when we talk about it's the will of the person, I think that's part of it. Also, it has to be a part that if we see a teacher or know a teacher or have experienced a teacher that is not doing or continuously are being biased, then we need to be able to get rid of those teachers. Period. You know, we, we have to get, you know, when you have cancer, you try to get rid of the cancer. You don't try to talk to the cancer. You don't try to, you know, do some professional development around the cancer. You get rid of it. And we have to have the ability to do that. You know, so that goes along with the will, because if they know, well, it's the will of the board to make sure that we are getting rid of this stuff. And if it's not, it's going to be the will of the board to let you go, then I think that helps with the will of that person as well. And I'm, I'm gonna be quiet.
All right. Byron, have you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah. I think that at some level, there could be some policy around like minimums, right? Like, what is, what is something that like, because I, I feel like criteria is a little too, too, it's really putting too much on teachers. But I think that like, because although I've never received a referral, my marimba teacher, eighth grade, she, he threatened a referral because I chewed gum in his class. So I think like at some level, there's got to be like some sort of minimum. Like, if they're doing this, like anything above this, you can give them a referral for. But at some level, like I've, you know, if you need more.
That's what I was looking for, the list of like, is he chewing gum? Is that harming anybody?
I mean, because I feel like there's a lot of things like that, like, and his reasoning was, well, I've seen gum on the floor of the boys' bathroom before. And I was like, I promise you, the gum in the boys' bathroom was not me. And so I think at some level, it's like that, like maybe having some sort of prescriptive method or maybe some ways for, and maybe it's already there, but like for students to petition and be like, well, I didn't deserve it. And like, but I don't know if referrals are too low level maybe for a petition. But I think having something where students have some sort of either structure to be like, well, I don't know if that was really deserved, even on that low level, or some sort of like prescriptive method for like teachers to be like, well, this is like, anything below this just is not.
It's, it's a challenge, right? Because there is some latitude that's afforded our educators. And everybody picks and chooses in battles. I'm grateful that you survived a silly battle over chewing gum. That does pose the challenge, right? You know, I let my students eat in class because I wanted them in class. And as long as they cleaned up and we kept the classroom clean, I'd eat away, right? Because I certainly wasn't going to go without food. I wouldn't go without food either. But as I said, every educator picks and chooses his, her, their own battles. And what we want to collectively work towards is people raising sort of the level of where they're focusing their attention, right? Is it about chewing gum or is it about you and I having a relationship in the science class where you're doing well and you're enjoying instruction and feeling like you're learning each and every day? And I don't know that in your example, chewing gum interferes with any of that. So.
Well, to be fair, it's probably my relationship with my marimba teacher. I could talk and not get it.
I want to, I want to do a couple of things to, to wrap us up tonight. First, a small sort of addition to what my colleagues have said, and particularly around accountability. And I really appreciated Director Hollins saying, you know, accountability doesn't necessarily mean discipline, right? It can mean conversations, it can be professional development. One small, I actually think a lot of accountability comes from even just knowing the issues. And I'd be curious whether we already do this or if it's possible to be, to be sharing the, the school level data, not just with our administrators, but making sure that our administrators are sharing it with the teachers. Because I think sometimes, you know, I, I, I love behavioral economics and behavioral insights. It's very possible a teacher who did twenty referrals thinks every other teacher is doing twenty referrals. And sometimes if you just say, do you know every other teacher did like two? That teacher may be like, oh, like, I didn't even know that. Or a school, right? You might find a school with a significantly high number and you get everyone together in a staff meeting. You say, hey, did, did you all know that we're three times higher than, than the school down the street? And our demographics are the same and all. And our demographics are the same and all those other things. So I think sharing the data can be, and maybe we already do that, but I think that could be a really important thing. Second thing I'll say is that I'm, I'm very proud to be serving as part of it. This data is not good, so let's be really clear, the data is bad. But I'm proud to be serving on the board of a district that cares, that's transparent about it, that's putting it out there. And I'm very proud to be serving with a board that's asking the questions. And while I'm proud to serve with all of you, I'm particularly proud to serve with this guy, Director Green, who I think just clearly set a, a good tone early on about, let's, let's call this what it is. And with that, Director Green had three more questions, and I'm going to read them, not because I'm going to do a better job, because you would do a better job, but I'll do a quicker job.
Amen.
Would like to know, what time of day does it show that most referrals come in? So this is a general point. What are the expectations for behavior? How is it communicated at school? Why it's a little bit similar to Director DePass's comments? And do the students understand those expectations? And how do we clarify that? And finally, if negatives behaviors are happening after lunch, or I think really at any time in the day, what is the activity that, you know, we might think about that behavior is happening? If, if, you know, if we're having math right after lunch and you're having, maybe your music is better to have after lunch. So I think I captured all those. All right.
I can answer the expectation ones really quickly. Each school is required to put together a climate plan, which outlines behavioral expectations, and then that's to students, students, families. And I can, but the rest I posted on website and it made available in multiple languages that are supported in all various ways. So the rest, though, I have to give more information.
That, we're about forty-five minutes over, but I think it was an important conversation and I had a good conversation with a lot of questions. So Superintendent, anything to close us out?
Thank you for that, especially conversation, it's an important one. Obviously, one of us are, like, see better indicators. Our students are feeling, they're engaged in class. So we're going to continue having this conversation, and I know we will as a team here as well.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was January twenty-fourth. Now we're.